I have not.
Okay, alright, so Carrie, were you okay? Did you have questions?
No, I signed it.
Okay, alright, so Darlene, we both signed it, but if you could look, look at it and, you know, let us know if you have any questions. If not, go ahead and sign it. Do you want to work on that later?
Yeah, yes, you don't want me to, I'm on my phone on Zoom, so I would, I could try to switch up, but.
No, that's alright, just, just do it later today and let Haley know or the superintendent's office know if you have questions.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, so moving on to approval of minutes. Did you guys have a chance to review those?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting in January.
January 8th, 2021. Okay.
I can second that.
Carrie, second? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes as written for January 8th? So it's unanimous? Okay, public comment. As far as I know, we haven't received anything. Haley, I mean, there wasn't a link on the agenda. Have you heard anything, Haley?
Anything either.
Okay. Alright. So then, reports and updates. So Haley, the principal's report?
Alright, I will share my screen. I emailed it out this morning, so you may not have seen it yet. Oh shoot, Josh, can you enable me to share? Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay. Okay, so our enrollment, no changes at this time. Staffing updates are a little unfortunate. So unfortunately, our music teacher has relocated out of state kind of unexpectedly. So he just put in his resignation, which is very sad, so I'll have to be posting for that position. And we'll see what we can do, you know, just for some extra music enrichment, you know, not formal music classes, but just to integrate what we can while we're waiting. And we are still looking for guidance counselor, Wednesday at tech, now music, especially at long-term and a K classroom teacher for next year. We'll also have to, you know, once we kind of know officially what's happening next year with our buildings, we'll need to be posting for a PE teacher as the split position, we're one-year positions for PE, so that will be advertised, you know, when we're back in one building, we'll probably want just one teacher again to do, you know, the regular schedule that we had, so that's coming. But we do have interviews already lined up, starting next week, for the classroom teacher position for next year, so I'm really excited about that. Really promising candidates. So I will let you know kind of what comes of that. And that was, you know, Lindsay and Lauren had split the classroom teacher position 50/50 this year, also one-year positions, just to kind of make this, be able to open both schools simultaneously, and they have both decided not to continue in the same capacity, although both want to be involved in like other ways potentially, and we've been having ongoing conversations, you know, since I first started, and have used Lauren for science enrichment, and will be likely doing that again next year. But that does open up that classroom teacher position, so I will let you know if we're able to move a candidate forward, hopefully, soon, which is exciting. Other things to mention about the school, I'm pretty excited about this, we're looking into offering enrichment programming and tutoring, kind of like summer school, a few days a week possibly, for the month of July. Families have expressed interest in both types of opportunities, the enrichment programming and in possible extra tutoring. So that's something I would be working with Julie Meltzer and Mark and looking at our funding sources and stuff and see if we can, you know, just offer some, like I said, enrichment, we're kind of using a Story Camp model from Swans to look at, just giving students, you know, an opportunity to do some extra stuff in the summer. We also have a virtual career day coming up next week through the TLC. We are launching our Lego Robotics Club next week. We got in some awesome Lego robotics kits. Haley will be hosting the club on Great Cranberry, Lauren will be hosting the club on Islesford. And we also have a few other ideas for some more extracurriculars we might be able to offer in the spring where some of the usual stuff that we have done in the past, like swim lessons, might not be able to happen. We're trying to look for some other things that the kids could do in the spring for enrichment. We're also planning some gardening projects, and the teachers have continued to participate in instructional coaching. And I've gotten really, really great feedback about using that model as a professional development model, instead of sending teachers out to a conference, or, you know, kind of a one-shot professional development deal, we've been working with instructional coaches who are experts in their field, and they've been coming to us through Zoom to exactly coach and answer our questions that we have as teachers of multi-age, multi-subject classroom, and all the teachers have said that it's just the best professional development that they've ever had, and as you know, some of our teachers have been in the system for a long time here. So that's been really, really beneficial this year, and we are hoping to continue our partnerships with Maine Math and Science Alliance and Foundations for Futures, which is our literacy coaching, and Candace Bray for next year, and we've also implemented these facilitated protocols examining student work and instructional practices. And that's been really beneficial too, we've moved a little bit away from so many nuts and bolts staff meetings and focusing much more on teaching and learning, student work, and really doing deep dives into our instruction. And I've also gotten really great feedback about that model, so that's something we also hope to have the time, and we've been doing that on our Friday hybrids days, and so that's just been extremely beneficial. Our kids have, some of our kids have just made really awesome growth, kind of as a result of this collaborative teaching model that we're using and really leaning on each other for support and being very structured in how we do it. So we really hope to make those two things a priority for next year. I've already kind of mapped out some of our REIT funding and talked to the teachers about that, so that we're allocating, you know, sort of chunks of money to make sure that we hit all our priorities for the year, and also including field trips and, you know, special projects and supplies and stuff like that, so I'm feeling pretty good about our sort of longer-term planning and the direction that we're going with, the teaching and learning. And the facilities update, there's no building updates at this time, the van on Islesford is not in great shape, you know, it's like van roulette every morning, like whether it's going to start or whether we're going to be walking.
Haley, Haley, it's not your fault, newsflash, it wasn't in great shape when I arrived five years ago.
We've kept it going.
It's, it's, it's showing its age.
It is, it is, so it's, you know, we have a lot of tricks with wiggling and starting and stopping and whatever, but like eventually the van is going to be done, but we do have the new van on Great Cranberry that we were able to purchase through the COVID relief funds, which, because it helped us keep both schools enrolled, because we didn't have any transportation on that island. So again, once we're back to one school, we'll have that van available, and that's fantastic and like very new, it only, it has less than 100,000 miles on it, so that will last us a really long time. But I just want to give you a heads up, like at some point, the van is not, like Jim and Steve are not going to be able to patch it together. I'll let you know when that day comes. And then the March calendar is attached, there's not much in it, this is kind of a, kind of a slow month. There's not any changes to, there's no days off, no special, real special events other than Career Day. But we do have the first day of spring in there, St. Patrick's Day, some things to look forward to. But that's pretty much, pretty much it for the school. As of today, are there any questions or anything?
Amy, can I just, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
I just wanted to add one thing to Haley's piece, I didn't want anybody to get nervous, we're having a discussion only about calendar, starting on Monday, and certainly all the, the pieces that are important to parents on the cranberries and board members, those are going to be, nothing will be decided, we're having a discussion on Monday, then we plan to do some surveying of parents and staff, and then bring some recommendations forward in April, so I just wanted to make sure people knew this is a planning discussion. And I attached some talking points to the AOS agenda, but there's no like specific model calendar there yet, because we, we haven't decided on recommending a start date, and we also have not put in the contractual PD days for the staff, so I just want folks to know that all we're doing right now is talking, putting some information out there, and then we're going to get some feedback. And so we have another month before we bring anything forward, and folks, folks' feedback will definitely be included, thank you.
And we are having one calendar for the, for the whole AOS, which will be really nice, because I know even this year, we were kind of off on a couple of dates, which I'm honestly not even sure how I missed that. So it'll be really nice, like we'll be on the same schedule, so there won't be any like, well, MDS has school, do we, kind of thing. Yeah, it will be very simple next year.
But I also want to add too, that we're very cognizant of the unique needs of our outer island schools, and there's always latitude, you know, I mean, we're going to navigate that through the board, any, any changes, any things, any adjustments, so I didn't want anybody to think that it's all, all of us marching blindly into the sun, but what this will do is allow us to coordinate our professional development and pieces, so it's, it's, it's really helpful for us to have our resources aligned, so. I didn't want anybody to get nervous on that piece, I just wanted to throw it out there, because I know you would have had a question about that too, Amy, and and so that's, that's why I didn't attach that, that calendar that isn't complete yet.
Okay, when we align professional days, I'm sure you guys are keeping in line, mind the TLC and the thing they do in the fall, yeah.
Absolutely, that, and again, the, the, those pieces still are going to be under the purview of principals, they'll be giving monthly updates and reports, so yeah, this is, we will always be building in capacity for those relationships, whether it be Island Institute or any of those other pieces that are important, yes.
Now Darlene, did you have a question? I thought I heard your.
Yeah, I had a couple, but you took one of them, so that was perfect. And the second question is just the robotics club, is that, is that for the older group and younger group, or just the older group? I'm just curious.
I'm pretty sure, I have the permission slip. What's hung up? I'd have to double check it. I'm pretty sure we ordered kits for K2 and we ordered kits for 38, so I believe that it's a K8 opportunity.
Oh, one.
We'll just, yeah.
Okay, so we'll be getting information on that later.
Yes, you should be. If you don't, yeah, if you don't get in touch with Haley, because we are starting next Thursday.
Okay.
Yep.
Darlene, I'm sorry, I apologize if I cut you off earlier, I apologize.
No, you're fine. I'm just, I'm very impressed, thank you Haley for getting all these extra activities available to us, so I mean, I'm very impressed, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, I'm really excited about this one. Lauren texted me a picture the other night, she assembled one of the robots on her kitchen counter, and she said it was, the kids are going to love it, so we're pretty excited to start.
Maybe they could build a van.
Right, yes. Start engine, what is the engine rebuilding club?
So Haley, I wanted to ask about the, the long-term sub for special ed? That's still an open position? What do you think your prospects are for getting somebody?
I think we have this as a discussion item, but it's a natural discussion right here. Do you want to do that now and then?
I don't know, if it's part of the principal part, we can talk about it all.
I think it's part of the, the plan for the leave, and Haley and I have had some discussion, and I have some thoughts as well that I can share.
Does anybody? Next one is this very topic, so. Anything else on principal's report?
Can I just add one thing, Amy?
Sure.
So it's not principal's report, but there's a lot of information out there that's circling about vaccines, and I just want to make sure that you folks are aware that we're, we're staying on top of that, it, the information changes like the wind, I gotta tell you, it's really, it's really hard to keep up what comes out of Washington and Augusta, but simply put, the school has no locus of control on vaccines in terms of determining, you know, availability, location of where the vaccines and, and all of that, and that's just so folks are really clear that we're taking our directives from, directly from the top. Right now, the good news is that any employee aged 60, any school employee aged 60 or older has received a link to register for a vaccine, should they choose to have one. And the other good news is that what changed yesterday is that the governor is opening up supply for vaccines for all school staff, so information is going out now as to how people can register at various locations through the state. It's important that people know that where they go to get their shot is where they're going to get their second dose, if it's a second dose in the case of Pfizer or Moderna, if it's a Johnson and Johnson, it's a one-shot deal. But, you know, if I go get my shot in Fort Kent, I'm going back to Fort Kent, and so there's a lot of logistics here that we're trying to make sure people are aware of. And I actually have another meeting at 10 on this topic, so I will have another update on, at the Monday AOS meeting, but I just want folks to know we're staying on top of it, we're providing the information for our employees, it's moving quickly, but that's a good problem to have, and I'm happy to take any questions you might have. So the only other piece is that, you know, before Haley talks about her plan, we, we've, we've done this before, and I, Haley, that's, she's smiling, it's okay. We've done it before, and I, I believe, unless, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was successful. I think we've got a model in place that we're feeling that we can navigate, but I, I don't want to leave anything per, per chance, that what, when Haley outlines what she's thinking, we'll certainly bring the resources to bear to provide any, whatever supports we have to that, for, for both schools, and the one thing I would say is we are really blessed with the staff that we have, because, you know, they're, they're invested in the community, they're invested in the schools, they certainly have knowledge, and I, I don't want to use the term well-oiled machine, but it, you know, they do a great job, so I, I'm comfortable with what Haley is going to present to you now, and and happy to be of any support that I can, thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, so I'll just talk about the principal part a little bit first. So I did, in sort of planning my maternity leave with the business office and whatnot, I did allow for three to four days of my contract to use during my maternity leave to finish hiring to just be available for the budget, for like, you know, the voucher, you know, there's, really, I told the teachers we're not spending anything after April 1st anyway, so there shouldn't be anything besides, you know, our regular bills, but I just want to make sure, you know, because when I was on maternity leave before, I was available, you know, babies sleep a lot, so unless there's a big crisis, in which case, I won't, and everyone will be able to handle everything. But if everything's normal and fine, then I definitely want to continue being involved in hiring, we have so many positions open. I think that's a really critical thing. Again, for me to be involved with too, since I'll be the supervisor of any new staff that we bring on, I think it's important for them to meet me, and we're doing a lot of things by Zoom anyway, and, you know, I can, I'm pretty sure I can make that part work, so I did have, save a couple days out to continue to be involved and be available for questions. I also have the same system I did as last time, where I have kind of a flow chart for the teachers, so they know like, if you have questions about this, this, and this, this is who you contact, this, this, and this, this is who you contact, they also have a really great relationship with each other, and, you know, Lindsay has a ton of administrative experience, so she's a great person that they can ask, who, who do I need to report this to, or who do I need to follow up? She'll know hands down and be able to point them in the right direction, and, you know, Mark can, again, handle anything major that comes up. And then I also.
Don't, don't give me too much credit, I don't know if I can handle anything major that comes.
He can handle some things. Yeah, and they all feel comfortable, I have the calendars done, I have any big expenditures that I know are going to come in, I pre-code them so that the business office has what they need. So I do a lot of prep work for those, you know, six, seven weeks. And so I feel pretty good about that administrative piece, again, you know, like Mark said, we, the team knows each other really well, we've been working together really well all year, so.
Haley?
Pretty confident about that.
I'm gonna, I'm, I'm, I'm going to repeat what I said the last time I went down this, and I, I say this with all due respect to the board, but you guys know I don't do newsletters, so. I just want to put that out there, people will be horrified if they see a newsletter from me. Sorry.
There may be a drop in newsletters, but we will still make sure important things are communicated. Yeah, so are there any questions about the principal part before I talk about the teaching part?
When, when do you go? When is, when does your leave start?
I'm planning on after April vacation, so planning on teaching through that Friday before April vacation, and then getting my leave at that transition point.
And then you'll be ready to go at the beginning of September, or when, beginning of next school year?
Yep, so in July 1, my principal part renews, so I'll be participating in the summer administrative team retreats and all of that, we have some summer professional development plans to do curriculum planning for next year that will likely be done with the new teachers, so I'll be involved in all that stuff.
We're not letting her go anywhere. Well, I say that carefully, but we, we've talked about the long-range piece, and you know, I, I definitely want to see Haley back, and as I hope you do, but yeah, we're, that's the long-term plan. All, you know, all, all things being equal, everybody's healthy and good, you're right.
We are blessed to have Haley.
Thank you, well, I love it, as you guys know, I love, love it, so we'll do, hopefully be launching year four soon, which is hard to believe, I remember one fellow, you guys asking, how long are you going to do this for? And I was like, three years?
I'm kidding, I, you know, we certainly, about the newsletter thing, we're going to get, continue to get information, I want board members to know if there's anything that comes up, please don't hesitate to call or email me, I mean, we'll do whatever we need to do within our whole team to support the teachers and the kids and the community, I'm, I'm confident. Honestly, I'd be, I'd be nervous if it was a much larger school, but because of the resources we have in the community, I'm, I'm, and we've done it once before, and I'm, I'm confident we can do this very well. But I, I don't want anybody to feel that, if, if they're concerned about anything, that they, they should reach out immediately, and, and we'll be okay. And I do know, you know, Haley's just a phone call away too. So, so, it's not like she's not going to be engaged, we're going to respect her time, but she's, I know I'll be talking to her regularly on anything that comes up.
Yeah.
And the other thing I'd say is that for end-of-year stuff, because that's so important to community celebrations, she'll have a hand in planning all that, and, and we'll make sure that those things, we'll look in long range now to make sure that those things are going to be taken care of, and nobody's going to be left hanging.
Hey, because that's Karia, right?
Yeah.
Or just Karia?
It's just Karia, and so Haley's already started the sort of project graduation planning for the other kids, you know, what we're going to put together for her. So yeah, by April break, we'll have a plan for graduation day and what that will look like pending, you know, whatever the current guidance is at that time, and if anything needs to be modified, you know, it will be, but yeah, we'll have a, a pretty solid plan for any big events that are going to happen after April vacation, and that's the biggest one.
Yeah, that sounds great.
You got, Amy, do you or any of the board members have any questions or concerns about this, because, you know, and if you don't have it now, we can certainly do a follow-up, I just want to make sure you, you folks are are comfortable with everything.
Yeah, it sounds like the principal, I think that, I feel confident with the principal piece. I don't know, I don't know of any, any concerns, I mean, certainly Lindsay is very, you know, she's done this before, and she's a good person, and, you know, but she's not the only resource, we have Mark and, and other folks, so yeah, I'm confident with that, I'm ready to move on to the special ed part if somebody else has questions.
So that's a little bit more complex, Haley and I are talking. And, you know, it, certainly we have our legal requirement that we, we will, and we want to, and will meet, that, that, you know, that goes without saying. I don't have to tell you that you folks know better than anybody else how unique it is, you know, being an unbridged offshore island and having the availability of, of, of resources out there, that's a little bit more difficult, you guys, you guys know that. So we have had the ad, Haley can speak to about that, but we're, we're talking about how we're going to navigate this, if, if we don't see a qualified applicant, number one. Number two, Haley has a meeting set up with Melissa Beckwith, the director of special services next week, and I will attend that as well, so there are some, some pieces we'll, we'll fill in there, but in, in short, one of the, the, this is not my preferred model, but one of the backups that Haley and I talked about, and I'll talk further with Melissa is, we may have to tap into some of our existing resources in other schools to see how we can bridge this. That's our default, that's not our preferred, but it's, it goes without saying that we're not just going to take a blind eye and say, oh wow, we couldn't fill it, that's not okay. We're already talking about what the, the Plan B and C could be. So I'll just turn it over to Haley, but that's, that's the involvement I've had to date. Haley, is that accurate?
Yeah, so back this fall, when I first started trying to plan this, I did have someone who was interested, available, thought she would be able to do it. When I posted the ad and got back in touch with her, unfortunately, her schedule had filled up with the other positions she was kind of working with, so she was no longer able to do it, so that was kind of disappointing, I've done a lot of recruiting and contacting and, you know, trying to see what I could drum up, and have not had a lot of luck, so it's, it's kind of, it's kind of an interesting piece. You know, so this, you know, as you know, it's my third year doing this, so the programming and the teaching part are very ironed out, the, the program delivery and all of that, I have Gail as an 80% special ed tech who's with me during my special ed time, who's extremely well-trained in delivering all of the programs I've created, so in all reality, the programming will continue no matter what, the content of the services will be delivered exactly as they have been for those last seven weeks. The legal and technical requirement is that we need a special ed certified 282 teacher to supervise the delivery of the program, even if we got a, a special ed teacher who is able to come in every day, Gail is going to know more about the programming and the teaching and the students than anyone's going to catch up on in six or seven weeks. So the reality is, it is more of a, of a technicality position than, you know, where the programming is established, so that's why we are, you know, somewhat optimistic that it would be a light load for someone else in the district to be available for consulting and oversight, they would be able to, you know, just do the end-of-year progress reports if necessary, that kind of thing. So we're going to be looking for someone more in a consulting and supervision role if we don't have a physical teacher to come out and deliver services. So that's like the Plan B, the Plan C, if we can't find that, is, you know, again, if the baby's healthy and I'm healthy, is for me to supervise, like I did, you know, if you remember my long-term sub quit like one or two weeks after I had Leah, and little Leah ended up coming out at like three weeks old and did an IEP meeting with me, and, you know, that's not ideal. But again, the, the teaching and the instruction, the program delivery will be the same, it's just a matter of having that consult supervision and whatnot, so that's Plan C, and then Plan D. And then plan D will have to cross when we get there. Um, but we are also looking at, you know, possibly bringing in just an, maybe not a certified special ed teacher, but just another teacher, you know, one or two days a week just to kind of support and help and be present. Um, so yeah, it's kind of like a fluid thing right now. Hopefully when Melissa and Mark and I meet next week, she'll have some more ideas. We'll start contacting kind of other schools and see who might be open to helping out. So we'll, you know, we'll get through it. I'm not worried about the students at all. I'm very confident that they will be one hundred percent fine. But it is more of that, um, you know, the legal requirements and making sure that we navigate that, you know, as optimally as we can. So are there any questions about that? That's less, less clear as of this point.
So we still have an ad now, however we advertise?
Yep.
Um, wonder if it'd be worth like posting it locally on the islands? See if there's anybody who might, you know, rethink things last minute?
Mm-hmm.
Um, is that, where does that get posted on the website or does that go on newspapers?
Oh, so, um, so we do, we, we can do newspapers. Um, it is pricey, but, um, and, and we have in the past and continue to do that with selected positions. We use a vehicle called Serving Schools. Uh, it's an electronic uh vehicle. It's, it's statewide. It, it's generally the go-to place most educators look. But, um, we're not limited to that. Uh, you know, certainly we, we do put it on our, our websites. Um, but you know, if there are other ways that we can, we can cast a wider net, we, we can do that. You know, when we, we do publish in local papers or, you know, in any, any, any papers, it, it is pricey, just to let you know.
Maybe like the MDI paper, the MD Islander and Ellsworth American, I think, did that for a couple of weeks. At least out to local.
We could resend, um, and, and do that. Uh, that's no problem. Haley, if, if, if you want to network with Karen, we can, you know, repost or, or get that out.
Yep, definitely.
Okay. Um, you know, I, I mean, we do have a low enrollment and I could see how, you know, the students are going to be taken care of. But, you know, it just seems like having, you know, number one, you know, our first choice is to have somebody. So let's definitely try to, I don't know, think of who we might try to encourage to apply.
I know. It's difficult because there's such a shortage of special educators in the state. That is the hardest certification to find. Um, even for full-time positions. So it is, it is hard. But yeah, we can definitely put repost. Um, and the Ellsworth American posts on Hancock County self-want, help on it on Facebook. So we can read, kind of blast it there and see if any, yeah, like you said, maybe someone new is looking now that wasn't in January.
It's, it's a good point, uh, to make because even in, you know, even in our larger schools at a full-time and we're competitive, very competitive with salary and benefits. Well, I say competitive, we, we stand out among Hancock County. So even then, we struggle to find qualified applicants for any of those positions on math, science. It's really hard. Uh, and now with, in the middle of a pandemic with people, you know, trying to support learners in virtual situations and there's not a whole lot of people around right now. People, most people are, are employed. Um, you know, the, a lot of school districts have used CRF funds to pick up additional staff. So the, the, you know, the, I don't want to say the cupboards bare, but there's not a lot of stock in the cupboards right now.
Just have a quick. Um, so my question is, I just want to make certain I'm understanding it correctly. Um, the supervisor part doesn't have to be present when the teaching's going on, just there for the IEP and the planning and the sign off and things like that, right? Like when you're setting your goals and when you're signing off and.
As a bare minimum, you know, for six weeks, yes, for a long-term position, that wouldn't be adequate. But a special ed teacher caseload is thirty-five students. Um, so we're so far below that percentage, um, that we can make a few hours a week work um via Zoom and whatnot. All the IEPs will be done. Um, all the stuff of the position is done. It's really just finishing out the instruction and final progress report at the end of the year. So, and then even by April, I can have a lot of that data ready for someone and they can just update it um, six weeks later. So yeah, that's sort of the bare minimum requirement because every school has ed techs delivering service because one special ed teacher can't teach thirty-five different IEPs. Um, so that's part of the model is supervising ed techs, you know, to deliver the instruction. So yeah, that's the bare minimum. Like Amy said, the ideal is to have a two eighty-two in the building, you know, part of the time. Um, but again, just trying to scrape through the last six weeks of the year, that's what we would need. If we literally couldn't find anyone, which I think is rare, then we would offer compensatory services and that means they would get extra time to make up for the time in the spring. So there's, um, a solution no matter what happens.
And then I have one more question that's not really relative to now, but I'm just curious if it would benefit us in the future at some point. Do we ever look for like any interns from like UMaine or anywhere that, not just for special ed, but for all these positions that, I don't know, could we tap into that resource? Um, since, um, we have, we seem to have a lot of turnover in some things like music and so I just it happened to the resource of, of getting some interns and, um, to benefit. I don't know. It's just a thought.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, we're very open to that and they'll contact, you know, sort of, we'll sometimes get blasts if someone's looking for a placement and we can volunteer, you know, if we have a teacher willing to take on, you know, Haley's student taught on French Borough and that's how we kind of ended up getting her in the Outer Island thing. So yeah, we've had opportunities to host students, um, yeah, pre-service teachers before. So yeah, and again, it's that part-time thing. What I've found is just those part-time positions are so much harder to staff. Like, you know, especially because both schedules are five hour, coming out for a morning is still five hours. So they can't really work at any other school. So it ends up being a day. They get paid for half a day. It's just, it's not a really appealing uh, schedule. It has to be really for the right person that it works for. And like Mark said, with every school just scrambling up staff, it's just becoming harder and harder and harder to find.
The darling, one of the, the, the short answer is yes, we would always welcome those internships. And, and the other thing too that was, is, um, something that I'm passionate about is that, you know, we, we do provide reimbursement, course reimbursement for support staff that want to become teachers. And I think there's a lot of opportunities. I'm, I'm a firm believer in growing our own, whether or not that supports staff to want to be teachers, teachers that want to grow into leadership positions. Um, and, and that's something I think that, that we need to continue to support here within all of our schools. Um, you know, the people that, that live and, and work here, um, there's some great opportunities. And I've found that you're not going to find better, better support for students in schools than people that are, are local and invested in them. So yeah, that we, we want to continue to keep all of those doors and options open all the time. I do recruiting too. Um, uh, also I go to the University of Maine at Farmington. Um, you know, I participate in those, um, programs for prospective graduates. I have to tell you, over the time that I've done this, um, I, when I sit at the table at those pieces, and now it'll be virtual, but, um, um, I'm sitting on one side of me with a person, could be a superintendent or a school leader from Florida. And this is at University of Maine Farmington. And on the other side of me is somebody from Alaska. People are coming from all over the nation to try to recruit. And I mean, let, let's look at our own other Haley. Um, she came from Alaska. I mean, so we're really looking at a, a, a global piece. And hey, let's face it too, we may want to think outside of the box. The Cranberries are a beautiful spot on this planet. Why wouldn't you want to come live on coastal Maine? So I think we need to start, you know, spreading our wings a little bit up across and, and looking at opportunities for, for people to come to live and work here. So I, I'm, I'm thinking that, that way, long range as well.
Um, all right. Anybody else have questions about the, the plan for the principal leave and the special ed? Teacher replacement? No?
So Amy, I, I, I have to go at ten for a meeting, but if I could, I just, before you move on to the room and board, I, I would like to just, if I may, um, just, I know you're going to talk about town meeting and that's really, you know, we're going to take our lead, but can, may I please just, um, can we just talk a little bit about school building use for twenty-one, twenty-two? Um, because I, I just want to make sure I'm part of that before I have to go, if that's okay.
Okay. Yes. Um, let's talk about that now.
Thank you. I'd like to say this carefully, uh, of all things being equal. And I plan to announce this, you know, for the AOS, but I want folks to know that we're, we're very aware of, of the conditions we're in with the pandemic. All of us know full well what we've had to deal with. But, um, and I want to say this clearly and carefully, but we fully intend to have all of our students back in our schools full-time and our staff in all of our schools full-time next year for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. I say that, I don't want to scare anybody. That's, that's, that, that has any concerns about the pandemic. We know full well what we've had to navigate. But given our asymptomatic testing program, given the fact that all, uh, adults should be vaccinated, um, soon, within the next couple of months. Um, and you know, depending upon what the requirements are for students, we're not seeing any reason why we would not be back in our schools physically full-time in the fall. You know, if conditions change, obviously we'll, we'll, we'll respond to that. And that includes what may happen with the variants. Um, so I'm not suggesting we're totally out of the woods. I believe we'll still be wearing masks and we'll still be washing our hands. Hopefully we'll be doing that forever. And, and there'll be some sort of physical distancing. I'm not sure if it'll remain six feet. You know, it may go to three feet, but all those things being equal, we'll, we'll play by those rules. But I think it begs the question, where are we? We've operated two schools. Haley and I would recommend going back to a single platform in the fall. Um, and navigating that as we have in the past. That doesn't mean that we're not going to be ready to operate two schools should we need to. But, um, I just want the community and the board and folks to know we're thinking in that way. Not just on the Cranberries, but in all of our schools. And I think it's really important folks hear that. I also want to say that we have no plans at this time or funding to support a virtual academy for next year. So I'm trying to give folks a heads up. Those folks that are doing that option and like that option, um, I would encourage them to start looking at the Main Connections Academy or, or other, you know, vehicles where they, if they, if they want that platform, because unless directed by the boards, um, we're not planning on, on having that platform in the fall, A. And B, if we are directed to do it, um, Nancy and I and the principals have some real hard work to do because we don't have that in our budgets and I don't know where that money's going to come from. So in short, what we're recommending is moving back to the platform where we, um, I don't want to say rotate, but we transitioned within our plan of utilizing the two schools that we have on the Cranberries and moving to, back to a single platform for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Haley, did I misspeak on anything? Please add anything if, if I was not. And again, this is a recommendation to the board. It's the board's decision. Thank you.
Well, that's good news to hear.
I have a quick question for Mark, if that's okay? Okay, uh, my quick question is if we are blessed enough to be able to return to one school, I'm, I'm assuming it would be Cranberry and it would be year one of two, uh, this coming school year. Is that correct?
Um, Haley, is that, I just want to make sure, because we were in the rotation, were we going back to, when you say Cranberry, you, Longfellow, right, Darlene? Is that what? Yeah. So we were going back to Longfellow before the pandemic, right, Haley? So our recommendation, I don't want to misspeak, is that we would transition back to Longfellow in twenty-one, twenty-two. Correct, Haley?
Yes.
Does that answer your question, darling?
About whether to do two years back to back there. This would have been year one of Longfellow. So we hadn't gotten as far as to the school year following that.
What? I'd say, I'd say that this year is a default, doesn't count. And the reason I'd say that, well, it just counts, but the reason I'd say that is that let's assume that we were in, um, normal times, weather situations. We'd be using both schools anyway. So I, I, I think in the rotation, moving back to Longfellow makes sense. I, I'd recommend that this time it's a two-year rotation and then back to Islesford uh, for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And I think that's, the math is correct, but that, that's our recommendation.
I would agree with that, that this year was just a neutral year and then we go back two years Longfellow, two years, um, ABS. And so that would just shift the rotation by one year from the original.
Sounds good.
And obviously, you know, if, if this changes, like, you know, with the pandemic, we'll be ready to respond, not react. We'll, we'll, we're making sure that we're, we're, we're going to have a, a backup. Um, always.
But not, well, and I have no doubt in that because I've been extremely impressed with how well this school year has ran. So anyway, we have a good team.
Yeah, well, we appreciate your support. You guys in the community have been really patient and, and great. And I'll tell you, so it's, we thank you guys for that. It's not been easy for anybody, especially the kids, the teachers and the parents.
Well, and that's why the budget, next year's budget is so important because we did budget for both options. Um, and so hopefully, you know, that gets supported again by the community because we don't know for sure, but you know, we did plan for both, which is nice that we can.
The community, the community should know that in the planning for that, that money will not be spent if we don't deliver that, that type of service. That will go to carry forward and have, um, an impact on future budgets. So the money's not just in there for us to spend. And certainly we're not spending any money without school committee approval. So it's a placeholder and it's not going to be spent if it's not needed or used.
Thank you. Um, anything else? Any other questions about that?
Well, that's, that's all I heard. So that's all I had. And so what we'll do is, and we will include that in, uh, any town meeting, uh, overview. I think, I think it's important as we explain the budget, we'll, we'll include a piece like that to, you know, whether that's Amy at town meeting or Haley or however we want to do it, we'll, we'll make sure the community is well aware of the, of the plan and the platform.
And I was hoping, Amy, um, when we moved to the town meeting piece, that I could share the budget fact sheet that I drafted because I did modify it from last year. And I think it actually helps explain some of those pieces, maybe a little bit more clearer for the community. So I'd love to share that and just get your feedback on it real quick.
Okay.
So Amy, I'm going to stay on until about, um, nine fifty-nine and then go to the nurse meeting. And I apologize again for doing that, but, um, I, I'll certainly be available if you have any questions afterwards. But, but thank you for being flexible with me.
Sure. Thank you, Mark. Yep. Okay. Uh, yes, Haley, let's move to the town meeting. Town meeting, it's coming up in what, March, pretty soon, in March. Carrie's got her hand up.
Yeah, I think she has an update on that.
Carrie?
A, a town meeting has been postponed. It is now May first.
May first? I, I thought they couldn't postpone it.
It is postponed.
It is?
They postponed it at, at Tuesday's selectmen's meeting. They postponed the town meeting to May first and the ladies' aid also.
Oh, well, good. Thank you for that. Yes. Um, okay. So Haley, you, you want to?
Yeah. So I just thought as a presentation, I was looking at some other districts, um, budget presentations. So I did a draft of this and I'm not, my feelings are not going to be hurt if you don't like this. If the one pager is more clear, then I totally can take all of this and just reformat it. But, um, I, I experimented with breaking it up by article so that, um, anyone, you know, it's, it's taken me like three years to thoroughly now be able to look through the budget and understand all the cost centers and why they're there and what it all means. So what I did is I broke it up by articles. So the first article is regular instruction. I put, you know, what it was this current year, what we're proposing, the dollar difference as well as the percentage difference, because sometimes it can be very deceptive. As well as the percentage difference, because sometimes it can be very deceptive, like this is a five hundred dollar difference and almost a five percent difference. So Nancy recommended putting both numbers in. And then I just kind of tried to include, you know, a summary of what the cost center is about. So that they're understanding, you know, this is the big bulk, a big bulk of our budget and really putting in here that, you know. Our high school student increased, that it's room and board for all secondaries who live full-time on the island, not just those who are enrolled. In a school, we have to budget for them because at any time they could move from homeschool to, um, a, a public or a private or school. And then we'd be responsible for those costs. So I tried to out like highlight those by cost center. Um, so we went into special education. Um, again, you know, a really small difference here and I think they'll see that there's, that though the budget did go up. If you look by cost center, no cost center disproportionately went up from any other. Um, so special ed is staying around the same. We have other instruction, again, a five hundred dollar difference. This is for all our co-curricular. And the wellness fund, um, student staff support. I, I didn't finish this because I wanted to wait and see if you guys liked it. Um, but you know, this is about guidance and library and our participation in the AOS. The next article is, um, again, more of the, the central office. And advertising, the school board stipends are all here. So, um, this was a draft and. It will probably end up being two pages instead of one. And I just, um, yeah, wanted to share that and see if you wanted me to keep going with this. Or if you want me to consolidate it to the one pager where we just have the big changes highlighted.
I like the information here. Um, I, I wonder, I, I mean, you're not doing every article, you're just doing the ones that. Show a, a change or a large-ish change.
I did, these are all the articles. It's through each cost center of our budget is each article. So I was planning on doing. Each article, yeah, it ends up, I don't remember, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight of them. Um, not the big ones where you approve the total budget or whatever. This was just the cost center articles. Um, and so that would explain here, transportation, that we've budgeted, you know, extra there for these reasons and the facilities, why we've budgeted for extra cleaning. So.
I, I personally love it because I don't have a mind for budgets and things like that and I, this just. The way it's laid out, my brain just processes it so much better. So I personally love it.
Okay, thank you. Um, Carrie, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Um, I definitely think that it visually is more appealing because you have it broken up. And I think going by the articles, because that's what we vote on, while it might seem lengthy and pages, I think it's very important. That you broke each one out so that people can see, oh, a, a, and I love the fact that you included the percentages versus the actual dollar amount. Because I don't understand percentages, but you show me the number and I, I understand that better. And I love that you've highlighted some of the reasons why, because I think that's the big question on everyone's mind is why did numbers keep going up? And this is, you can't. You keep finding ways to explain the information to people. Um, and I love that. And this is just another, uh, further. Way that you are showing them how the money is spent. And I, I think it's, I even love the colors, they're very. Um, soft, which I, I just love that even.
Yeah, I think it looks good, Haley. It's a good idea.
I mean, I can keep, I, I can finish with that and then I can also just consolidate it to a one pager and. You know, we could even provide both if people like one rather than the other, or we could put, make one available on the website or, or whatever. There's. You know, with technology, it's pretty easy to give people access to things, so, um, yeah, so if you're fine with this, I'll just, I'll finish with this. And then I'll consolidate it into the old one and then you guys can pick what we'd like to use when we get closer.
I love the graphic you have up top there.
This is our new logo that we're putting on all of our, um, all of our letterhead and stuff. I love it so much.
I love the tree.
Right? Because we're the Nor'easters, we decided last year. So.
Yeah, um, okay. Um, do we need, so our budget, we can't change anything in what we've presented to the town, that's going to be presented as it is, even though. By May first, we may have numbers from the state. But Nancy usually brings that to a town meeting anyways.
Yeah, she'll do the, if she has to do any amended, she'll do that, um, then. So yeah, we actually probably will have some more solid numbers then.
Yeah. Yeah, and your fact sheet can be more up to date than probably the town report. Um, okay, anything else about town meeting?
Um, just waiting on next steps, Amy. Um, um, I'll check in with, with Nancy. Um, and folks, but I don't have any, any update at this time, um, on, on when we'll hold up, but I'll, I'll circle back with Nancy.
All right, thank you. Okay, then let's move on to room and board rates for secondary students.
I'm going to, um, um, excuse myself, but Haley and I did chat, she has a recommendation, so, and I'm comfortable with that, so, um. Uh, I'll, I'll circle back with you all and if, if you have any questions for me and Nancy about that, please let me know and thank you for your flexibility and. Take care, guys.
All right, thanks. Have a good meeting, Mark.
Yep, thank you very much. Bye.
Okay, so the, the recommendation I wanted to make around room and board for secondary students. Um, is specific to, um. To aligning Swans and French Borough and Cranberry so that we're all kind of doing the same thing. Swans actually has a, a board-approved policy on this. I don't think that we have to make it a policy with a policy number. I think that if we include it in the fact sheet and like capture it in some way that from here on out, everyone knows that. This is what we do, that would be sufficient. Um, the specific question was, we have an, um. A paperwork and process already for students who board off-island with a non-family member. Uh, we have a rate for that and they, and how they submit for that, um, reimbursement, so to speak. Um, the question was around children, students boarding with family members. And that's a little bit, um. Not, I want, I don't want to say complicated, but historically Cranberry Isle School has not reimbursed that cost. But Swans does. And they reimburse at a lower rate. They reimburse at ten dollars a night, Sunday through Thursday. Um, if they are boarding with a parent. Um, so. I'll just real quick finish, I can share the policy with you for you to look over how they've worded it. Um, but I guess my recommendation would be if Swans is reimbursing ten dollars a night, that we would do the same thing.
Carrie?
Um, I just have a question, when did that change? Because historically, we have had students board off with family members who did receive reimbursement. I was on the board when it happened. So I just was curious when that changed.
Oh, I don't know, maybe it was, I asked Nancy, you know, I was like, do we have a rate for if it's a, like a parent? Um.
Not a parent, so I don't think it ever happened with a parent, but I know.
Parents specifically. Yeah, with a parent.
Okay, because that, I think, I think historically, if a parent is off-island, we have never given.
Right.
Room and board to the parent. Like sometimes parents move off. Historically, parents have moved off with their children. But I know that family members, um, cousins possibly.
They would be treated as. Side, yes, that's right.
Okay, that, that was, that's why I was making weird faces, because I'm like, wait, I know, we.
No, that's a really good clarification, yeah. So this, I, I should have had the policy pulled up to share my screen, but yes, it was parents. And so Nancy first said, well, usually they just establish residency in the town. Um, but I think this is speaking for an arrangement that's specifically for the student to attend school. And if they're not a K-eight school, we're, they're tuitioning in anyway, you know, so like, if someone moves to Northeast Harbor. Permanently, um, then they would establish residency, but if they're doing, you know, some kind of winter rental. Just to do high school or whatever, then that might be considered, you know, a boarding cost. And it's not a lot, you know, it's a pretty low rate, ten dollars, five nights a week. Um, but again, I'd, I'd like to at least email you guys the policy, let you look it over what Swans is doing and see if we want to. Align ourselves with, you know, some of their language and their process.
Okay, I think it's definitely worth looking into. Um, yeah. I mean, I just, it seems like you kind of get into some, some muddy waters, like, you know. If you move off, are you then a resident? Do you, yeah. And it's.
Yeah.
You know, where we want to keep people living on the island, but also then, you know, there's the cost of kids, yeah. There's a whole lot of difficulty. So yeah, it'd be nice to have something that, you know, sums it up well.
Policy too was like if, um, a parent got a hotel because they were doing extracurriculars for a few nights. That again, ten bucks isn't, I think you get you very far down that road, but it sounded like it was for that kind of thing too. Like either short-term or a longer-term, um, situation. So yeah, I know, I, I struggle with that too because we, you know. Families do have to establish residency, one place or another, so we'd really have to, um. Navigate that, so tricky and confusing, but I think the more we can clarify these points and get them written down, the better.
Yes, definitely.
And I have something to add. I think too, it helps in some ways to keep residency here for those who have younger kids. Because I can see where you would move off, possibly have that ability if it was just odors, but for me, um. Having Audra here and wanting to keep her in the school here, this would be helpful, especially since like all my jobs are here. So for me personally, something like this could be helpful. Um, if my kid decided to go. To a school where they needed, like for MDI or something. So it would have been helpful like with my oldest student who's graduating this year and, um. Because, because then I had three kids still in the Cranberry Isle Schools and working here, so I, I couldn't, didn't have an option at all, but, um. Anyway, I could see it being helpful, even if it's just for occasional, a hotel night for, you know, for. The part, the kid to participate in a activity that's going on. It's ten dollars is not much, so I don't think it. I think it could be helpful and not hurtful personally to the board, so.
Yeah, and my biggest recommendation is that we're doing what Swans is doing, because that gets confusing when. You know, I'm trying to figure out, what do we approve and different island schools are doing it differently, so.
Okay, yeah, well, I definitely want to look, look at that and, and consider it.
Yep, I will email that out to you right after the meeting, to everybody.
All right, so that's all we have for discussion items. Um, moving on to other business. Is there any other business to bring up? No. Okay, seeing none. Public comment, we already did that and I don't think we got anymore during this. Did you have other business?
It's, well, no, it's not other business, it's public comment from me. I just want to just give a shout out to Haley over here, I know I do every meeting. But I just am so blessed that we have such a good teacher and we do across the board. We have good teachers on both islands and, but she. I mean, she makes snowmen, she made snowmen with the kids, she just does so many activities like above and beyond. Uh, she, I'm sure she could have. Used that break while they were having their snack and playtime and she was building snowmen with them instead. And so there's just not a lot of teachers that go to that extra mile, or maybe there are, I just haven't, you know. I haven't experienced it to, experienced it to this extent and, until I, until Haley's, um, been involved with the kids and I just want to say. Thank you for being such great teachers out there and just thank you to Haley Estbrook, she's awesome.
That's awesome. I'll make sure she gets that shout out. She will, that will make her feel good. That's awesome. Thank you for saying that.
Okay, so future agenda items. Um. Let's see, our next meeting will be in the beginning of April, so Haley, you'll, that'll be probably last meeting before you leave. And then. We'll look at, we'll maybe talk about the room and board policy. Um, after we review it. Um. Anything else for future agenda items for next month? Okay, um. All right, so date and time of next meeting, I've got Friday, April second. Twenty twenty-one. Um, should we do, uh, nine AM again? Zoom meeting, I'm assuming it's going to be Zoom. Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. All right, so. Then I'm going to move, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Hi. Thank you, everybody.